Help me get this closer to the commission. I mean, just slide it. Oh, sorry. Get your arm tight. You might need to give it back. Give it back.
Answer the question.
Okay. So we'll officially call the special meeting of the Albany Port District Commission to order. My name is Georgia Estefans. I'm the chair of the commission and we'll go around and introduce ourselves.
Joe Poffey, Treasurer.
Dominic Taganel, Commissioner.
And I'm Jeff Perry from Albany.
Tom McGinnis, Support of Albany.
Hey, we'll try again.
Charles Coase, Support of Albany.
Patrick Jordan, General Counsel.
Eric Smith, Director of Internal Controls and Enterprise Analysis.
Richard Hendrick, General Manager.
Okay, good deal. Economic Development. Do you hear us, John?
I can't hear you yet.
Okay. Can you hear me okay if I just don't touch it?
Yeah.
Okay. So as you know, we went out to bid on the contract for the South Wharf reconstruction project. The bids are in. The staff have been working with both our engineer as well as the state on vetting all of the responses that we received. And at this time, I'll turn it over. George, Megan, combination.
Excuse me. Thank you. We have received four bids. We looked into the lowest bidder. We worked with Moffett Nickel and the state and staff at the port to determine that the lowest bidder was also a responsible bidder. We found that all of the requirements in the bid were met. We have John Shermer on the line to give us a little bit of background as to what he did and how we qualified the lowest bidder as responsible.
And just before we turn it to John, I just was going to talk a little bit about the procurement process that we did follow. As a public authority, we did follow the public procurement process that we're required to do. This was initiated in the beginning of February. It was put out to bid. We put it on the Contract Reporter and in the Times Union and on the port's website. We held a mandatory pre-bid meeting here actually in the Security Operations Center and we had roughly 40 individuals that attended. During the bid process, we got substantial inquiries and questions related to the project and had good dialogue where Moffett and Nickel assisted us through that process. The bid due date was actually extended at one point, so that's where we are in terms of the timeframe. We think we got four substantially, four bids that were very quality companies that responded. We were very appreciative of the interest and response that we got and the work that was done on this job. So we took a look at the bids thoroughly and then I'd ask John now to talk through the vetting process that we did.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a little bit of feedback from my end, but that's okay. I'll just work my way through it. Just to give an overview in review of the bids, Moffett Nickel on behalf of the port conducted investigations. Those were done to determine responsibility, the qualifications and the financial ability of the apparent low bidder, who's Harrison Ambrose, to perform the work. Overall, the bid was very competitive. There was only about $85,000 between the apparent low bidder and the second low bid. It was a good tight bid and it was very competitive. We reviewed the bids with respect to the engineer's estimate and the other bids received. Harrison Ambrose' bid appears to conform to all requirements. It is a balanced bid and it meets all the requirements of the bidding documents. To determine responsibility qualifications and financial ability, the investigations we undertook included contacting their references. Their primary references were with the New York State Department of Transportation and the New York State Thruway Authority, the Canal Corporation. The feedback we received from both those references, the references they listed was excellent. We also took it upon ourselves to contact others, other potential references that were not on their list of references provided. Those involved other engineering firms and other firms involved in construction inspection of the projects that Harrison Ambrose has undertaken. We wanted to get an independent assessment and overall, we'll say that the feedback was very positive from all references for all investigations. We re-reviewed the experience and qualifications of Harrison Ambrose and their subcontractors and that was done in the context of the type of work that's going to be done or is involved with the Wharf reconstruction. Primarily that involves demolition, pile driving, sheet pile installation, formed concrete, concrete flatwork, rail systems, marine timber systems and then work involving cold weather work, work in the winter and also work in the water. In all instances, Harrison Ambrose has demonstrated experience and capability of providing all of that. They have that experience and they are qualified to do the work. We also reviewed their equipment. They provided a list of equipment they're intending to use for the project. They may not use all of it, but certainly the equipment they have in their inventory is appropriate for the work at hand. There's no questions there. In addition, the port requested from Harrison Ambrose and they provided a vendor responsibility form that's on file with the New York State Department of Transportation. In essence, everything looks good. There's no issues identified for their integrity either for bidding or contract award. There are no issues associated with their certifications or licenses. As far as legal or government investigations go, generally that came back as good. They have had some issues or some instance, a few instances of OSHA violations. Those are all now closed. There was one serious violation that resulted in a fine. However, that's been addressed through their internal policies, their company standards and training. And we consider those to be lessons learned and we consider those now to be closed and adequately dealt with. We've looked at their financial and organizational capacity. Currently their, this project, the Wharf reconstruction project is well below their single project bonding limitation. And overall, their aggregate, their aggregate bonding capacity taken in context with their backlog, there is, it's clear that they have capacity to perform the work from a financial standpoint. We worked with Megan in the port. We looked at their minority women and business enterprise involvement and also their service disabled veteran business participation. Overall, they didn't quite meet goals or they didn't meet goals on their minority participation. They quite far exceeded their women business enterprise participation and fell short somewhat on their service disabled veteran business participation in terms of percentage. However, overall, they exceeded the goals that were established for the project. And likewise, perhaps as importantly, their participation that they're proposing is nearly double that of the second low bidder. So it appears that they made an honest and good faith effort for MWBE and service disabled veteran business participation. Just to summarize, the limit test for the capability of a contractor or the intent to award is investigate or the investigations are to determine that the bidder is responsible, is qualified and has the financial ability to perform the work. And in all instances, we found that that is the case for Harrison Ambrose.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
One thing I would mention is in terms of the service disabled utilization, this is actually the first project that the port has put that utilization requirement on the outreach. This was the first rolling it into our public outreach. So as John indicated, they did provide utilization of that more so than any other bidder, but this is our first run at that.
But that's not a poor requirement, that's a great requirement?
State requirement. New York State. Yes.
And are the MWBE goals that we've got, they're not cumulative, they're intended to be discrete for each of the, for WBE, MBE and service disabled? Are they not?
They are identified as individual percentages, but the state takes, they're two separate, MWBE and service disabled. MWBE, we believe, will be taken as a whole.
What was the nature of their, John, this is Joe Poffey. What's the nature of their previous OSHA violations?
Almost everything was associated with painting and paint preparation. Their painting violations, well, almost every one of them was, relatively minor violations were associated with ventilation and respirators. And the serious violation is actually a silica-related violation. And that was, well, I guess to, in a nutshell, it was a fair removal and adequate fitment of respirators during processes, paint processes that involve silica.
And the other, I guess one question I had when I looked at their bidder's qualification statement, all of their references and projects were bridge projects, no wharf or wharf reconstruction projects. Is that your assessment?
Yeah. We found that the large majority of their projects and project references were bridge-related. However, that project experience is actually very applicable to the Wharf reconstruction project. They involve their bridge projects that they listed and their references for both Thruway Authority Canal Corporation and New York State DOT. In many respects, those bridge projects had marine activities that are, in our opinion, more complicated than the Wharf reconstruction activities itself. For instance, their Bachelorville Bridge project involved open water construction of bridge foundations involving braced and deep water sheet pile copper dams and installation of foundation elements within that copper dam. And that's high order precision pile driving done from barges. And that's not the type of, that's a type of marine activity that's quite frankly much more complicated than what they'll experience on the Wharf reconstruction.
I was more, I was more concerned with the compaction issues on the land side, your experience with working with those issues.
Yeah. I don't think that compaction is truly an issue. I mean, they've done bridge construction, they've done highway construction. But from the standpoint of, there's really no fill material associated with the Wharf reconstruction. Everything we're dealing with is in situ. There's some minor backfill associated with the cutoff wall installation. But almost everything is, in this case, removal. It's a high level deck. The new structure is a high level deck. What happens immediately behind the new cutoff wall, there's a modest amount of fill, just this structural backfill. But most of that's in situ material. And actually, there's an approach slab that spans between existing grade and the new structure. And frankly, that's very similar to what you'd find on a bridge construction anyway. So we think they could easily handle that.
And in your discussion with some of the other references, the prior projects, were there any issues with requests for change orders that were out of the ordinary or unusual?
None that we received in terms of out of the ordinary. There was one little bit of feedback regarding, this came from PDG in terms of capacity to do the work. Involved a project in Lake Placid, actually involves seven bridges that were being constructed simultaneously. Appeared they were falling behind a little bit. The construction inspection firm anticipated a request for extension of time. But in the end, the contractor picked up the pace and completed the project on time with no extension granted. So nothing unusual in terms of change orders, nothing in terms of, nothing unusual in terms of requests for additional time. I think overall, the feedback, let me find my notes here if you'll bear with me for just a second. The feedback we received from their references was really good. And in essence, they said they're good to work with, they're diligent, they do their work on time, they do their work on budget and there were no qualms in terms of their capabilities.
Can we go back to that MWBE question? I don't know if I understood it, but I just wanted to make a statement that it's one contract that would be issued, it's one contract that would have 30% goal. And the projection is that it would exceed that goal. It is broken down by M or W.
Well, there's no, we're not really close on the M side. It's primarily a woman number that we're hitting. We're trying to stick John correctly.
That's correct. That's correct. However, we have talked, we vetted all of the nine subs that are the M and W companies with Empire State's Development, MWBE Division. That's the certification and we were confirmed that they are certified and good standing companies. And we talked over the factor of the mix. They were quite pleased with the ability to achieve the 30% cumulatively.
So they, let me just understand, so we've had feedback from the state that they're comfortable that we've not got the M number, but we've got the combined number?
Their response was impressed with achieving the 30%.
That's not quite what I'm asking for. Okay. I guess it is. All right.
Thirty plus percent, I should say.
Are there other questions for John?
Any need to talk with John in executive session or any other questions?
I'll confirm my question. I'll change on that one. Okay. I think that's great.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, for your feedback and for working with the team to vet out the bids.
You're very welcome. It's my pleasure. Are we all set then?
Yeah. If you stand by just in case we had any emergency questions, we'd call back.
Yeah. I'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, John. Bye now.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So I think we want to enter into executive session for a discussion of contract purposes. So with that, I'll take a motion.
So, a second.
All in favor?